All right, I'd like to follow the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three to order.
Call please.
Mayor Gravino.
Yep.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Gately.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedvedge.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right, thank you. Audience comments? You may hear trustee comments?
Yes, I have one, Mark. So I don't know if everybody's been following the what happened with the woman on the bicycle and run over by a truck in Batavia. And there was another accident and you aware that Steve?
Yes.
So I've been approached by some county officials and state officials from some experts. So what they're going to do in Batavia is they're going to do the road diet plan. Are you aware of that?
Yes, Sam.
So the road diet plan is where they shrink the road, for lack of better terms, and they have a turn lane. According to the experts, I was told it's much safer and they're asking us if we would consider doing that part into North Aurora make because I, I, I assume it's going to go up to Mooseheart. And they would like to extend it to, I don't know, Oak Street, State Street.
Steve has some info on that, didn't you?
Yeah, so Batavia's is going to go to Mooseheart. That's where they're looking to Geneva, obviously did at first. It's making its way down. It's, uh, I want to say it's in our actual comprehensive plan. We looked at it a long time ago. There was some discussion on how many daily trips are on Route thirty-one and whether we had a small enough amount of vehicles because after a certain threshold, it becomes difficult to move everything down to two lanes instead of four. I mean, obviously you have the turn lane in the middle. Um, so one of the things though that came up with this conversation was that we are actually looking to bring it up again. Uh, we're thinking we have our strategic planning session coming up in a few months. It was something I looked the other day just to make sure it wasn't in the strategic plan. So it's definitely something the board's willing to look at. We can always go back out and look into it. I mean, everybody knows their route thirty-one's lanes are pretty narrow.
Yeah, I think they're not conforming least inside lanes are terrible. Yeah. Yeah.
According to the state experts with the road diet, they're going to do in Batavia is much safer than when we have. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
Oh, and just one thing to add, um, uh, we did have a resident reach out about the, the icon flashing beacons, the yellow flashing lights. We have a couple in town. We have three of them, um, but they're on two lane roads with, uh, middle turn lanes in some areas. Uh, generally speaking, when we've had residents and ask on Route twenty-five or thirty-one, we've had two people, I think, on Route thirty-one asked for them. Uh, we generally haven't looked into those on four lane roads. Uh, because of the fact that sometimes the accidents that have occurred at those beacons tend to be on four lane roads. Um, the idea that maybe when you're crossing, you don't see a car coming from another direction or vice versa. So we've kind of refrained from looking at any state routes of four lanes for those types of things or anything like Route twenty-five or the speed limit's fifty miles per hour.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Well, all right, everyone, under discussion, Steve?
Thank you. Item number one, uh, for discussion is Taco Madre is looking to get a Class B liquor license. Uh, Taco Madri actually had an existing license, uh, a few years ago. Uh, they chose not to renew it a few years back and now they're looking to, um, to start it again. So, uh, for reference, just as a reminder, we bring all new liquor license requests, uh, back to the village board now, and we take it to the committee of the whole first. Uh, they have not indicated, uh, we make them indicate whether they want video gaming as part of the initial, uh, request. And, uh, they had said that they are not looking to pursue video gaming. They just want their liquor license. Uh, the menu and the, it's funny, we, we try to give you a layout, but they're an existing restaurant already. So we just show you pictures of the inside of it. Um, it's in your packet. The other thing they're looking for, and this is, uh, for the liquor commissioner, the mayor to, to sign would be an outdoor supplemental, um, license.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Like Taco Madre, they've been around.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Item two.
Steve. Okay. Item number two is a new, uh, Riverfront Ram Truck dealership. It would be on Orchard Gateway. Uh, this item has gone to, uh, Plan Commission already. It just went to the most recent Plan Commission. Um, Dave Hanson, our village planner, is going to walk through an overview of the project. Uh, this would be for a standalone ram truck dealership. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Thanks. Thanks, Steve. So, um, as Steve mentioned, this has gone through Plan Commission and they unanimously recommended approval of it. We had one condition regarding signage, just making sure it meets our code. And then they added five additional conditions, as you might have saw in the packet. Each of those conditions are, would most likely be, well, we provide a status update for each of those conditions as well. But each of those conditions also will be reviewed during engineering review and building permit review should the project move forward. Um, at this time, we'll just like to solicit some feedback from the village board on this. Uh, we actually have some reps from Riverfront Ram here, and we'll just go through a quick presentation. And then you guys can ask any questions you would like, and, uh, we could provide any context should you need it. So.
Good evening. I'm Corey Spooner representing Riverfront Ram. I put together a short presentation to show what, uh, what our goals are. If you could. Uh, what we're proposing is a new vehicle dealership. The dealership will be located on Orchard Gateway, just east of the Sharon Williams, uh, store. Next slide, please. Um, this picture reflects all four sides of the new building. The top picture shows the side of the building facing Orchard Gateway. The next two are going to be the rear of the store and the front of the store. And then the third one is going to be the north, uh, north facing part of the store. This is an overview of the, uh, of the dealership. The parcel is five point three acres and the building would be north, just north of twenty-eight thousand square feet. Uh, the property runs from the Sharon Williams building all the way to the target entrance across the street. Next slide, please. Uh, we're projecting sales of about a hundred and twenty-five vehicles per month. Um, service, we, we plan on servicing thirty vehicles per day. Uh, parts will increase. We'll have a total projected sales of eighty-five million dollars. Uh, that'll be an increase from what we're doing now of just over forty-five million. Next slide, please. This new, new dealership is going to help us increase sales, service and parts. Uh, it's going to create twenty-five new jobs. And it's going to help, help small businesses get their vehicle back on the, on the road quickly. Next slide, please. Uh, Riverfront has taken an active part in supporting our local community and customers. We want to continue to grow and support them. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, do you, uh, are, are you in the business of selling ram trucks at the moment?
We are.
Oh, you are. Okay. This would just expand that sales.
It's going to expand the sales and it's also going to, it's, it's going to expand the ability to work on the vehicles that we sell. Um, the dealership we have now, we're, um, it's not set up to work on thirty-five hundreds, forty-five hundreds, fifty-five hundreds. The lifts are, they're not equipped to do it. The entrances aren't high enough to get them in the building. Uh, so it's going to help on all aspects.
Yeah, great. Yeah. Plus you have more inventory, I'm assuming.
Or he's going to bring that number to sell.
Actually, yeah.
So to increase both stores, Jeep or Ram are our biggest brands. Jeep's going to be at the original store. We'll be able to increase cheap because now we have more space.
Yeah.
We can increase Ram because we'll have more inventory.
Yeah.
Sounds fine to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm in favor of it. It's a nice, a nice addition to that area.
Very good. Thank you, Cory. Yep. Dave, anything else to add or?
Uh, nothing. Actually, you have anything, Steve?
I know the only thing I would add is that the Plan Commission had some suggestions. Um, David has them in the memo. Uh, basically, they looked at things like, uh, just the access to the site and, and a lot of the stuff is going to be picked up during engineering review and as normal, a part of the normal building permit process. Um, was there anything that was glaring, David, that you wanted to point out?
Uh, not really. That's like Steve mentioned, this cross access easements was discussed, uh, landscape plan, dumpster location, things like that. That can all be worked, like we said, during the building permit process, make sure they made all those zoning ordinance and design standards for the village.
All right. Thank you. All right, item three.
Uh, thank you. Item number three is, uh, is a water master plan. And, you know, typically I would say we normally take studies directly to the board, especially when they're budgeted. Um, they're just part of the budget process. We say, hey, we're going to do a water study. It's going to be in the budget and then we take it straight to the board for approval. In this case, this is a, this is a large study. I mean, you could see by the dollar amount, it's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So just because of the, uh, enormity of the, of what it's doing, I thought it was a good idea to just bring it to the board. So you see it first here and ask questions. Uh, we have somebody from EEI, the consulting engineers that we'd be using on the project, uh, to give a brief presentation. But ultimately, this is a major water study that's going to cover several facets of our water system, including our future potential source water locations.
Hello, Steve Dennison with Engineering Enterprise. I'm Vice President there. I've been with EEI for about, for nineteen years. Um, I passed around before the meeting. I thought it might be appropriate to understand if you're not familiar with who EEI is and our work with master plans and rate studies. Uh, the document there, front and back, provides, uh, some context of our references of the work that we've done in the area. Uh, pretty extensive. You can see a lot of communities around here. Uh, you can see, uh, the type of work, the scope of work that's identified is very similar, uh, to the work that's going to be accomplished here, uh, for this plan in North Aurora. I felt like the memo, uh, that was sent around, uh, was a very good synopsis of the scope of work, uh, that's going to be accomplished. I would say in addition to that, uh, in a nutshell, mat water work system master plans are trying to assess the condition of your existing assets and your infrastructure and water system. Your supply, treatment, distribution, storage, and your capability, your ability to be able to handle, uh, growth in the village and, uh, development activity as well as depreciation of those assets, how long, uh, they might be able to, uh, continue working and what improvements may need to happen, both to meet the needs of the village's water system, uh, from a capacity standpoint, as well as the condition of the assets. So we take a very comprehensive look at all of those components. We do a thorough analysis and evaluation. We determine where improvements are required and with a lot of, uh, uh, conference with, uh, with the staff, of course, working with them throughout the process. And then we provide cost estimates and a phasing and implementation plan. After we do that, then we have to figure out how we're going to pay for those improvements, right? So we look at the rates, uh, the rate structure and we determine if your rates are adequate or if there are, uh, we would suggest making changes and provide some options, uh, for rates in order to pay for those improvements. So that's essentially what we're doing as part of the, uh, of the water work system master plan. I would say in addition to the regular items, there's a couple of, uh, additional items that are, that are in this particular scope that are, think are warranted and are wise to include after, uh, discussion with staff. Uh, those are, uh, related to regulatory matters, uh, that have come, uh, on the horizon. One is the corrosion control, uh, plan, looking at, uh, the corrosion of water in a distribution system and making sure that the village is doing everything they can to minimize that, uh, in relation to lead and copper. Uh, and then, uh, the other item is the lead service line replacement plan. So this is a recent thing. You've heard about lead services. We're actually working. EEI is working with the village currently on the inventorying for the lead service lines. And there's a requirement, uh, by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to produce, uh, a plan by April of next year. Uh, and then it's going to be subsequently updated annually until the final completion of the plan in two thousand twenty-seven. At which point you will need to identify, uh, how you are going to replace the lead services in the village. So this is a regulatory step that's included in here. Um, level of efficiency, including in a larger study, uh, we thought it was a good idea to, to include it in. Um, other than that, I, I'm here to answer questions. Um, as was noted, there is a, a, a large contract. We fully understand that and appreciate that. Um, I remember several years ago having discussions with Paul Young about this very study. There's been interest in it for a long time. And, um, there's been a lot of discussion about having it done. And, um, we're excited to be able to work with the village in order to, uh, develop the goals of the, of the plan and to come up with some ideas for you and how to accomplish them.
If I could just add one thing, one of the, I mean, he touched on it was talking about the water rates, as you know, we presented a five-year water rate increase plan and we, even after those five years, we'll have the lowest water rates in this area. And what it comes down to is you have a treatment, you have two treatment plants that are entering that lifespan of they're at fifteen years old. Now they're going to start needing some maintenance. Uh, we have two towers. We've been talking about building a third tower for a while and we're actually pursuing different options right now and seeing which ones cost effective for that third tower. By doing all this, what we really want to get out of it too is we came to the board and said, we have about twenty million dollars worth of projects in the next twenty years for the water system. This is going to help us define that scope even better and say, this is where more specifically that dollar amount should go and to where. And it'll help Jason and I sit down and Jason start planning out with the water department and actually put almost like water has its own capital plan. And the ideal would be is to try to adjust rates accordingly. So we can hit, you know, some benchmarks and make sure that we're keeping the water system as up to date as possible. Uh, one thing that's not touched on, uh, uh, overly in this is it does talk about future source water. As, as everyone here on the board knows, we have six deep wells. That is our, our entirety of our water system is based on those deep aquifer wells. Um, and what this would do is also look at potential source water. If it's sustainable, is the aquifer sustainable at some point? Are there other sources of water or other parts of our water system where we can connect to other people to maybe draw water from them if we need to? And that's what this study will do. So we'll be planning because those things are expensive.
Thank you. That's something I neglected to touch on, but I think is very important part of this study is, uh, we have entered, we'll be entering into an agreement with the Illinois State Water Survey who has a groundwater model, uh, in this area and will be utilizing that model and modeling certain specific conditions moving into the future. There's a lot of, it's a very dynamic situation, as you probably know, in the region here. You have Yorkville and Montgomery, who we're actually working with those communities on obtaining Lake Michigan water currently, Oswego as well. And Joliet, uh, too, and those are huge users of the same aquifer that you're using, uh, for your water. And what happens when they get off the aquifer, is that going to, how is that going to impact, uh, the supply? Is it going to potentially prolong your ability to use that aquifer? Uh, but at the very least, we'll be able to answer some of those questions and understand that better. What the reliability and sustainability of that aquifer is for you moving forward. And look at some of the other options that we know are available, uh, between the Fox River and Lake Michigan water. And look into those and provide some context and what it would take to, to use those as well.
I like what you had to say there. Um, very impressive resume. Um, I'm familiar with your company. You've been around a long time. So, um, very professional.
Thank you.
You know, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
What's the timeframe for the study?
Uh, October next year is when we anticipate it being completed. It's, it's a lot of work. It's going to take over a year to get it done.
We'll also include like looking at shallow wells.
It will. Yeah, absolutely. That is going to be part of it. The, uh, the Illinois State Water Survey also was able to model, uh, the shallow groundwater. We know that there is an opportunity potentially in the west side of the village. Um, obviously Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles utilized that what's called the St. Charles, uh, shallow groundwater aquifer. Um, it's very highly sustainable out there and we're going to look at opportunities potentially for the village if there's, uh, a way to tap into that.
So the cost of the contract, um, I don't remember exactly what it is. Is that for the study, the work that you will do through, say, October of next year? And then you did mention something going into twenty twenty-seven. Is that then an additional cost to the village or it's, it's, it's all within the same contract?
That would be separate. So this is going to take care of a great majority of the lead service line replacement plan. It's going to do the initial plan, which is a lion's share of the work. There will need to be annual plans that are submitted afterwards until two thousand twenty-seven. That is not part of this project. Um, very minimal cost comparative to what we're looking at here.
Trustee Salazar, to your question, the, there are so many layers of the lead service line law that we're kind of in that initial stage of, uh, it's actually technically we're not, we, we were past the initial stage was you just had to have an inventory of like a guess of how many homes you think had lead. We're in the phase where we've been working for about a year or so to try to get a more refined inventory. And we sent notices out to thirteen hundred homes and I want to say we're about sixty-five percent roughly, so almost about two thirds done with getting responses back. But those are actual responses verifying the type of, of metal that is in their house, if it's lead or copper or whatever. So at that point, once the inventory is done and you have the actual number of, uh, it'll help Jason specifically look at our, our finances and say, we can afford to do X number a year. And then what Brian, Adam, our water superintendent, Jason and I will sit down and look at doing is creating a multi-step program over years. You don't have to start technically replacing lead lines until two thousand twenty-seven. Our goal is actually to try to get to it faster if we can, where I also look for grant funding if it's available. So that's what we're trying to do. And you can't really do that without having the plan for the IPA first, which is due next year.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a good move. I, I really like the, the idea, Steve.
Yeah. Yep. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Number four, Steve?
Okay. Item number four is, uh, revisions to special event permits. Uh, so this is our code. It's, as John Luskowski used to say, just small enough so no one can read it. And, um, I'll, I'll, uh, put it up a little bigger, but this is based on the revisions, the discussions we had last time. And, uh, we basically, the staff came back one time to show you the revisions we made. And then what we would like to do is take it to the, the village board for approval. So the, I'll just give you the quick overview. The last discussion was basically to take special events and divide it into two, a process for village board and a process for the staff. Uh, so now in certain cases, if someone wants to have, let's say, music after a certain hour or they want to shut down a village road, those are things that we said are probably big enough that the village board would, would really be like, hey, oh, you can't shut a street down in my neighborhood without telling somebody. We thought we'd leave those for the village board and still make people come to an actual board meeting to get a permit request done. Um, but internally, because the fact that we do get a lot of these last minute or sometimes they just happen after the fact and you're like, yeah, I saw that happen last weekend and no, they did not have a permit. Um, we thought we'd have a more, uh, internal process too. And that would allow us to, to look at things like parking, instead of having the, uh, very specific parking number requirement now. Parking's not necessarily a requirement for a special event permit. What it is, is if you're saying, I'd like to have a special event and we ask you, okay, well, what are you looking to do? The staff can look and say, okay, are you using drive aisles in any way that you'd be blocking them? Or are you using so much parking? What do you, what's your plan? Are you going to take so much parking that it's actually going to affect the whole shopping center? In those cases, we can require the permit to be signed internally, or we can say, no, you're taking three spots in a thirty-spot lot. You're fine. You don't need a permit for that. Um, so then it gives us an administrative process. And then the other one is village property would also give, uh, me or my staff the ability to, uh, if someone wanted to use a section of, of, of a park or, or, you know, Riverfront Park for a couple hours. And we'd be like, normally we wouldn't do that, but oh, it's a fun run and you just want to starting the endpoint to be here. That's fine on a Saturday morning for two hours. We can sign off on that as long as they're not disrupting the park from other people to use it. Um, so that's basically the major things. Um, also liquor got taken out of here. We used to make you come to the board for liquor. Uh, when in reality, the village code already sets up the liquor commissioner to be able to sign a special events, uh, permit or a special use liquor permit for a special event. Uh, so we just took that middleman out, went straight now to the mayor. If you have an event, you want liquor, you don't need a special event permit from us. Oh, but you still need a liquor license. You can just go to the mayor and have the mayor sign it out. That's pretty much it. And then all we did is had to clean up the application, anything that would be redundant or no longer, uh, required, we just removed it.
I'm fine with it.
Yep. Sounds efficient, you know, for government. It's pretty good.
I'll take that as a compliment.
Yeah, it is. No, it's step forward.
There you go.
All right. Last item, uh, number five.
Thank you. Item number five is, um, the one that's given me some concern because even before tonight's meeting, I was still looking to change the PowerPoint several times. So it's, it's really going to come down to, if I'm going to pull it up real quick here.
Mobile food truck vendor.
The big issue going back several years, when we first started talking about, uh, regulating mobile food vendors, um, hang on one second, let me get to it. This is what I get for not putting it on my desktop. All right. Trying to remember where I saved it. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. These are the four areas. You can see the different colors that highlight specific things in each, uh, in each bullet point. Those four colors represent basically four ideals for mobile food vendors. When the board started looking, we used to not regulate them at all. And then we ended up regulating them because there was a concern, it, it, if I remember correctly, it all started with a, a business in town that wanted to have a trailer, uh, come to their parking lot and set up shop and be there for six months. And literally just leave their trailer out there, hook up their water, you know, through a hose to the building. Uh, some towns do allow that. And so they asked, uh, about doing that and the board, we brought it to the bar, so whoa, 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 we can't allow that without the board knowing about it. So we took it to the board and at that time, the board was concerned about brick and mortar businesses and I don't know if, uh, a mobile food vendor should be allowed to set up shop on somebody's property for an extended period of, of time. Uh, so we, we made it very restrictive on, on when they can be there. So they can't be on a property for more than two hours in a week. Um, and that's it. So one, basically one day, two hours for an entire week. Uh, sometimes, as you might know, you know, I'm going to throw out a Menards, you might see it at a Home Depot. They'll have, uh, they'll let a food vendor set up shop in the parking lot and be there on the weekends or whatnot, uh, but we do not. So uh, we've had the request once since then for a vendor to set up. Uh, I believe it was at Woodman's a couple of years, about a year ago or so. And we told them, no, it doesn't comply here. Um, doesn't happen often is my point. Then that was the first time we went through mobile food vendors. Uh, mobile food vendors got brought up two more times. One, uh, we had a business on thirty-one that there was, uh, some discussion of having a brick and mortar business, using the food truck as the kitchen. They didn't have a kitchen. Uh, so we wrote this section of the code that allows a food truck to operate onsite and serve the food in the brick and mortar building. Um, we have had zero people since then actually ask about that. And that business has no longer pursued opening. So at this point, we're going to reopen it to the board to see if we want to take that exemption out. And the other time that it got brought up, uh, at a board meeting was, we talked about, um, it basically was about private events. There was a neighborhood that was having, uh, mobile food vendors come in. They were using a private parking lot. But they were inviting their neighbors to enjoy, uh, food trucks. And there was a concern from some residents about traffic on their street. Um, so that's where the board, uh, reiterated that, um, we wanted to keep the parameters in place, but you can ask for a special event permit. And, uh, and that's one way to maybe get it approved is to go to the village board and get a special event permit. The, the truth is with mobile food vendors, and, and I'm glad Nathan, um, being new, but coming from another village. Um, I was glad to talk to him today about it because, you know, his town has experiences with mobile food vendors that are very similar to ours, which is ninety-five percent of them don't get permits like they're required to do anyways. They just show up and no one's around on a weekend to stop them. You know, ice cream trucks drive through neighborhoods, uh, people will pull up to a ballgame and all of a sudden there's a truck that shows up. And right now our requirement, so I'm going to go through all four of them. The first one is you need a permit. You're supposed to go to the police department and get a permit. There's some exemptions. For instance, if you're doing it at a village event or something like that, and we're actually hiring you, um, you know, we don't necessarily require them to go through it. But technically speaking, everybody who operates a food truck is supposed to go through a, a village permit process. That is not a background check. It is, they provide like an affidavit that says that, you know, they have not committed a certain crime. Um, they are all licensed. They have to be regardless of us. They have to be licensed by the King County Health Department to operate a mobile food truck or trailer in King County. So they're covered by the county in that regard. Uh, number two is it's, this one's pretty cut and dry. We don't allow them to stop on busy roads. So you want to stop on a right of way in a neighborhood, okay, you know, curb, private party on the weekends, fine. We just don't allow them. And those are the list of roads we have. You cannot operate a truck at any time on these roads. It's just too busy to have, uh, a truck with traffic. Then the yellow is the one I talked about. That's the restriction of, you know, no truck can be on a property for more than two hours in a week and you can't have more than one food truck. Otherwise you have to actually get a special event permit. Um, can be very restrictive for things like even like the school districts when they have a fun run or a local business. Um, wants to bring a food truck in, whatever for their staff and it's, and, and everyone has to pay, um, out of their own pocket for those types of things. Technically speaking, if you have more than one truck, you're supposed to call the village and get a permit. But of course, we find out about these things like the day they happen or, oh, you know, one of the schools had their staff and they, and they got a food truck for everybody. And it's like, yeah, you were supposed to get a permit for that, but we don't really go to tell the schools they can't have a food truck there. And then the fourth thing is the exemptions. We do have the exemption for the Route thirty-one area that I talked about. And that's if you want to set up a kitchen out of your truck and serve it in a building, um, that's something to talk about tonight and private events. And private events. The board did say private events should be exempt. And that goes back to our special event discussion we had last time. If someone's having a weekend party, I I know in my neighborhood, I've seen a food truck here and there. People will call a food truck in and maybe it's a birthday party. They want to have a good humor truck or something there. They show up. Uh, technically speaking, they should have a permit to be there if they're, you know, if they're operating in our town. Once again, you don't know about it until it's literally happening ninety-five percent of the time. So the questions are more, once again, this is more of a workshop. We we didn't want to go back and forth and and tell you how it should be. You're the village board. We want to know what you think. So, you know, with eliminating the the mobile food permit was the first question we had. Is there any benefit to having a permit? And, you know, the first thing I would think of is that a background check would be the, I kept saying to myself all, the background check's got to be important to some degree, until I realized I didn't do a background check. So, you know, at that point, it's just a piece of paper that says, I swear that I haven't committed a crime. They go into the police department, pay their fifty dollars, and then they can operate for the year. So at that point, they're already going to the King County Health Department who requires them to get registered with King County and get inspected and everything.
Do we do that at like uh Portillo's that, you know, do the people serving you, I mean, you know? No.
No, the only time that we do any like certification checks is liquor licenses, like uh, to make sure the uh, the restaurant has, you know, a basset train people or something like that for to serve liquor. Uh, the village doesn't have any uh control over uh health department requirements in our town. The county is is uh the the entity that handles all of that. Then the second question was, did you want to eliminate the Route Thirty One exemption? We wrote it in as an incubator. You know, we had one business, we thought maybe if they stuck around, maybe it would catch on and a couple of other businesses would like to do it. There's very limited number of of businesses that even have the ability to have a building set up for. The reason why it worked for them was the previous building was a fast food restaurant. So it already was set up inside for a restaurant. And that's what they were looking to do. This is the one that is the most difficult to talk about because there's, you know, typically there's uh seven different board members and and even at the staff level, if when we had these conversations, what's a reasonable amount of time? Is it two hours a day? Is it one day a week? I mean, there's loopholes already in it. So i- if you can be a, if you're a truck and you're a truck that cannot be on a property more than one time a week for two hours, that doesn't mean you can't go to six other properties and just rotate and be in our town seven days in a row at a different property. Or it doesn't say if you're a gas station, you want to have a food truck there, that you can have a food truck there in two hour intervals throughout the day. So.
I see what you're saying.
So I mean, and technically, nobody, this has never been an issue. This is why I'm bringing it up is is whether or not the restrictions even this tight. It's always what triggers that special event permit needed. And it's so tight right now that it's like, a lot of times it's never even been an issue. So what we thought though is, um, we have here, and of course I can zoom in on it, but I broke it out and really for the board, I'm looking to see, do you want to still limit it in any way? And if you did, I thought one of the ways that we could do it is break it out in the property and the truck itself. Right now, the way the code's written, you're almost going after the truck. So it says no truck shall be on a property more than two hours a week. And yes, you can ticket a truck for being there for three hours if we, if the cops go out there and they say, oh, he's been here for three hours and we go out there and that's against our ordinance. It's actually easier if there's a pattern of someone trying to usurp our code or go around it in any way. It's actually easier to go after the property owner because they're not going anywhere. We know who they are and they know where their business is. So we can actually reach out to the contact at the business and be like, hey, you're not supposed to have a food truck here five days in a row. You need to come to the village and have that requested, you know, or we can simply give them a a warning or a fine at that point. So we wrote it in a way where we say no full mobile food vendor shall stop on the same property more than blank hours per day. Internally, I'll tell you the number we had was four. And the reason we said four was most parties are longer than two hours. Um, most events that anybody has, uh, employee appreciation, whatever is going to be more than two hours. After four hours, it's, at that point, it's like, okay, this is more than a party. You're just sitting there all day now. So we came up internally with the uh, the number four, but once again, that's just for discussion purposes. And then no property shall host a mobile food vendor more than you can insert four hours per day or more than blank days in a calendar week. And the idea was maybe two. And what we're starting to think of was this. We have businesses in town, and I don't know this for fact, but there are businesses in town that maybe um, you'll see there's breweries and and things like that. Maybe because they don't have a kitchen, they'll bring a food truck in on a Friday night. Maybe they want to bring one in on a Saturday night for a few hours. They just want to have it on a, on the weekends, Friday, Saturday. It's two days a week. It's, they're not setting up shop. It could be a different truck Friday and a different truck on Saturday. But the question for the board would be, is that excessive that a business who doesn't have a kitchen but caters to a large crowd wants to have food brought in? Would that be bad for them to have two versus one day in a week? So those are kind of the open-ended questions I have.
I think, I think, I, my opinion would be, if you're referring to like a brew place and they have food, I think it's a better better deal to have the food truck there than no food. So my opinion would be yes, you can have the food truck there both days. That's my, my perspective.
I, well, to me, I, I I don't hear you differentiating between residential and commercial property, but maybe you are. But um, I agree with Mark, like I, Brother Chimp does that, right? They have food trucks come in. They, I don't know how long they're there, but I've seen them there. I think that's a good thing. And, I, you know, I don't have a problem with that being there four hours, whatever, twice a week, or, you know, really maybe seven days a week in in that particular situation. But if you're talking about uh, somebody's residence in a neighborhood, I don't think somebody wants a food truck there, you know, several times a week, maybe, maybe one night, four hours, like you're saying, they're having a party or something. So in my mind, it's a different question for a commercial piece of property than.
So that's a great point. Um, and I should have gone through it. And one of the exemptions we have now is that private event. So I was doing the same thing. I was going back and forth and and right before the meeting, I said, what if a homeowner just wanted that not, I mean, this is, the chance of this happening are probably slim. But what if a homeowner wanted to, you know, have a food truck every weekend and have their neighbors come over and it's technically not a private event unless it's catered, meaning someone's paying for that food truck to be there. Okay, like they're paying for the food and people are just getting it served out of a food truck. So I don't know how many times people would have um, you know, have a truck come into a neighborhood and and do it, but a lot of this code was written for commercial properties. Um, it was really like more likely is a gas station. Um, we've seen it in our region. You can go to a gas station and there will sometimes be a food vendor serving, you know, in the parking lot. And when you see that, that would be more of like what I would see, uh, or brewery would be a good example of one that doesn't have a kitchen, but maybe wants a food truck. Um, as far as the neighborhoods go, we can always write something in there that says, you know, um, it says here, no property shall host. And that's why I wrote no property, because I didn't know if that one should differentiate between uh, residential or commercial.
Well, I, I believe that, let's say that that homeowner was the food truck owner. They can't park that food truck in their driveway, right?
So that would fall under, just having that falls under a different section of our code, which would be commercial vehicle parking.
Okay, I I thought so. I just wanted to ask a question.
So let me go back. I know I threw a lot at you. So real quick, I just want to ask you some direct questions here. Are you okay for the most part of operating under the King County permit? Or would you like us to consider having um some kind of permitting process for the trucks?
I think it's fine to get rid of it if they're getting a license to down the already.
We have many people apply anyways.
I think we had two last year, Joe.
I haven't signed any since I've been chief.
Yeah.
I thought.
I think we can get rid of it. I think we can get rid of it.
Okay. And then the second one, do you want to leave the exemption for people who are looking to um operate out of a food truck and then serve inside the building or? And I had it on the last slide about um, we do want to put a provision in that says that no one shall be affixed basically on a property as a a a brick and mortar property and using, I'll, I'll just go to it. Uh, the last one was mobile food vendor shall not be the primary source of food preparation for a brick and mortar business. Yes. So if you're good with that, we'll get rid of the Route Thirty One exemption.
Yes.
And we'll put that language.
That's fine.
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve, I, in my opinion, I would just like to see an absence of permanently setting food trucks. If they move in and out, uh, I don't have as big a problem with anything like that. Uh, unless they're sitting there always. And that's why I had uh some issues with uh Thirty One. Um, that business on Thirty One a few, a year or so ago.
Sure. But I will tell you that that where this gets a little tricky is it goes now, when you're outside of the mobile food vendor, this is basically about operating as a mobile food truck. Parking's going to fall under what's legal to park your mobile food truck in a different area. So, and uh, just for reference, there are restaurants in our region that operate food trucks and the, and a brick and mortar business, and they park their food trucks at their business. There's, there's an establishment in the town over that I, that I like. They have their food trucks in their parking lot, but it's a.
Do they turn off their stoves and lock their doors on the truck? I mean, that's not the same thing as what I'm talking about. So, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that if it's a business in town, they also operate a food truck, that would probably be allowed already.
I'm talking about permanently selling food out of a truck.
Yeah. And then the last one is the the hardest one. Is there, do you want to keep it the same? Two hours a day in a calendar week, no more than one food truck? Um, if we can come up with an internal process if someone wants to have it for, you know, longer than two hours, do you feel like that that's, there's some uh wiggle room on that? Or do you guys, do you, does the board feel like that's a good?
I like your new regulations. I like how you have it worded.
What uh, has there any restaurants asked, like Brother Chimp, for instance, have they asked for more?
No, no, they have, but honestly, I I couldn't tell you if they know we have this regulation to begin with. And and that's the thing, like, it's trusty sales are pointed out. I actually didn't know that for sure. Um, I had heard that they, you know, like that might be one business that had food trucks there.
They had one there Friday.
And and I don't know, but if I went back and looked at a flyer, I'd be, I I'd be shocked if it was less than two hours.
And I would say they don't, and and they don't do it every Friday, I don't believe.
They do it a lot of days.
Yeah.
Two hours is enough.
Every two hours.
Brother Chimp. Not every day, but a lot of days.
Oh, I thought it was.
Mark, you say it's enough or not?
No, I don't think it's enough. Two hours is.
No, I don't think two hours is enough. But again, for me, in my mind, it's it's differentiating between the commercial property and the residential property. So you know, that that's my main, main, main concern. If you have Brother Chimp, I don't care if they have a food truck there four hours every night, you know, really. Um, especially where that's located and and whatnot. But if you're talking about someone's residence, then I have a a bigger problem with that.
I think it could be eight hours. You could have a business open for lunch through dinnertime and make it worthwhile.
Or whatever, right? One day, yeah. I mean, it could be ten hours or it could be six, whatever is good for them.
As long as they're there and they leave, like that's, I think.
Not permanently sitting there. Yeah.
Okay, so if I'm hearing this from the board, I could take out the hour restriction. Are we focused now on just days?
We're talking about Friday, Saturday or any day?
More, no, 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 number of days.
No overnight.
Because it'd be too hard to do like Friday, Saturday only in case someone do something on Wednesday. What I'm saying is no more than two days in in a consecutive calendar week.
Per business?
Per business, right. Like right now, and I'm, like I said, it's the board's decision. I, like, right now, we we limit it to two hours, one day a week.
Right.
So I don't know that I'd want to see a place have a food truck every day. Only because.
I wouldn't either. That's, that's the same as a permanent truck in my opinion.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I would.
Two, I think two days a week is reasonable because they mostly have it on a Friday and Saturday or a Saturday and a Sunday.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
I I mean, it can always be changed, right? So we're just trying to come up with something. And if that doesn't work, we can.
What I like about that too is if there's a pattern and, you know, Joe's police officers are are saying, hey, you know what? We saw they're having a lot of food trucks at this place.
Yeah.
Because it's on the property and not the truck, we're not trying to figure out which truck it is.
Right.
We can have the conversation, hey.
Right.
And we're going to put a caveat that you can have them for extended periods of time, but with approval. So if you wanted to.
Sure.
Say, uh, my business, I would like three days at my business because this is why. Maybe bring it back to the village board and have that discussion.
I would also, um, I don't know if, if Trustee Christensen is uh, what what you're thinking, but are you saying for eight hours each day? They could, is that what you had in mind?
Just up to eight hours because just, for instance, let's say Brother Chimp, they open up, they're there for lunch. If people are going to be there and potentially drinking, why limit it to four hours when you could have different people coming in at lunchtime or dinner? Whatever snacks.
Or like a commercial business.
Yeah, like noon to eight or something. That's eight hours.
Yeah, and they won't stay if there's, if it's not good for them. So they're just going to stay during the lunch and dinner, Russian, they're probably gone.
But yeah, for like a personal party or something like that, nobody's going to eat one more than four hours.
Yeah.
It would be less than twenty-four hours a day though.
Yes, so the way I have it in my head right now is I wrote must leave property. So Mike and I and uh, uh, Mike and I will come up with some language and basically you must vacate, the the business must vacate the property and, you know, reestablish it at a different point or something.
We're at eight hours, not to exceed eight hours, is that right?
I, so do we actually have an a a a number? I thought we were taking the number of hours out.
No, I I would like to keep something in, some kind of, I, in my opinion, I'm just the one voice here, but I'd like to see it maybe six hours, but uh, eight hours is fine with me.
Lunch and dinner.
Well, and and how how do you know when they start?
That's the difficult thing of enforcement.
Right. I think that's exactly right. It's not, it's not really.
We'll call Joe and he'll chalk the tires.
I've done that before.
I don't think that's really doable, but I think two days a week is fine.
Yeah, I mean, if if it's like, uh, it might be eight, it might be seven, it might be nine, it's close, right? It it, but if you have nothing, then it's could be like, okay, they've been there like fourteen hours.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, so eight hours.
Yeah, not exceed.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions about this?
No.
Okay.
Really, it's good.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
No succession, correct?
Correct.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's the same. Good night, everybody.